I will call to order Woodstock's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 18th, 2020. I got 7:34 PM. I'm just gonna do the, uh, the roll call and the way I'll handle it is I'll just read through the names for commissioners and I know you're here, but we can state for the, uh, the record, um, that you're here. Joe Adelena?
Present.
Uh, I know Blackmer is not able to join us tonight. Sid Blodgett is trying to connect, but not yet. Gail Dickinson? You're here? Okay. Nancy Fraser is not able to join us tonight. Jeff Gordon here. Jeff Marcott?
Here.
David Morse?
Here.
Doug Porter is not able to join us tonight. Fred Rich? Did we lose him? He was on.
He's muted.
Is he? Here he is. Fred? Can you hear us, Fred? Fred?
How's that?
Okay, you're here. Rynowitz? Tim Young? Let me see about unmuting here. Tim, can you hear us? He is here. I just asked him to unmute. Let's see. Tim, can you hear us? All right. Hopefully he can, he can hear us because it's listed as on audio. So I'll note for the record that we do have a quorum. Our meeting rule and guide, um, I'll speed again for the record. We are meeting according to the Governor's Executive Order 7B and 7I. The applicable provisions contained therein. This certainly is being audio recorded as we usually do, but this is also being video recorded. And the town will post that link when they're, when they get that set up. The normal rules for conducting the meeting still apply. I will ask that if, um, especially if you're not a commissioner and staff, if you can, keep your microphone on mute so we don't get background noise. And if anybody does wish to speak, if it's appropriate, and in order to do, I will recognize, members of the public. I do want to note, and I'll get right into, um, uh, to note, as we're starting the meeting, we have had to make some changes and items that were able to take up tonight. I know I had sent some communications out to the commission. Um, and when I get to those agenda items, I'll explain in a little bit more detail because certain agenda items, we're not fully able to take up as planned. Tonight, we are going to have to limit our discussion or not have some, any major discussion on some of them. So it's not to, uh, cause any potential legal problem with the meetings of the commission. But I will explain, um, a, a little bit about, uh, when we get to those, um, two agenda items. And those, um, have been reviewed with Tina and Delia and Rich Roberts, our town attorney, as far as how to proceed, really, uh, about that. I believe I did send communication out to all the commissioners. I hope you got the emails that I've sent out trying to keep you up to date from a procedure point of view, what's happened with our planned agenda. So, uh, so that way you would have a heads up, um, about it. Now, I don't know if, um, Sid, have you been able to connect in by phone?
Hi Jeff, yes, I'm connected by phone.
Okay, so I will note that Sid is here. Welcome Sid. As far as designation of alternates, um, we have one alternate here tonight. And you, um, that's Dwight Rynowitz. Dwight, I can seat you tonight.
Okay, sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And if you're gonna have a big celebratory party in the background, make certain to see it on the game. My chair's report, which is going to be very quick. My usual thank you to all the commissioners, uh, to the staff, uh, for all the work that's done. This has actually been extremely busy preparing for this meeting, as staff will attest to, in keeping us very, very busy behind the scenes for various reasons. I will give you a heads up that, um, even though this meeting packet was big, because we did have to include, uh, a lot of stuff relative to the, um, special permit for the country store gas station, the meeting packets, um, for at least one of the July meetings will be large or larger, just given the volume of documents. So if you wanted to, um, pick them up, coordinate with Tina. And since sometimes when things get mailed, they seem not to always get to people in time, because of the postal service. But you can coordinate that with, with Tina and she can have your packet available. I usually just stop by and, and pick it up, uh, so I have it. But certainly coordinate with her and she's happy to, to do that if you wanted to pick it up as opposed to, uh, mailing. Sometimes when things are posted and scanned on into the system, you're not always able to see the, the big, big version of it as opposed to the big maps that get printed. But all those printed copies are still going to be made available, uh, to be mailed or picked up. So I'll leave that up to your pleasure. Is there any citizens' comments? Not on any agenda item, uh, at the meeting. I will get to meeting minutes. We have actually three meeting minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of May 21st. We have the executive session minutes of June 4th and the special meeting minutes of, um, June 4th. So we actually have three, uh, meeting minutes, uh, that were provided. What is the wish of the commission?
Move, we approve.
Second, David Morse.
So, uh, motion made by, um, Gail Dickinson, seconded by David Morse to approve all three. Is that correct, Gail? That was your motion?
Yes, all three.
Okay. Does anybody have any discussion or comments about the, uh, meeting minutes? Hearing none, I will go through the names for our vote. Joe Adelena?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Rynowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young? Tim, can you hear us? Are you in favor or opposed to the meeting minutes, Tim? He's not muted. Oh, I can't get any, don't know. Just that as, we can't, don't know. I will text him to find out if he's having any connection problem here. So he can, just to make certain. So the meeting minutes pass and they'll get, they'll get, uh, posted accordingly. The next is, um, new business. This is 7A, number 5410607M, GCS Land Development Corporation. This is a previously approved 14 lot subdivision of Route 198. This is listed as a request avoiding, uh, of the subdivision approval. And, uh, and release of the bond once the milers are filed. This request is actually, has nothing to do with any type of violation of the approval. This is a request actually coming to us. One thing I do want to note for the record, let me pull that up here, is the specific wording we have to use. And I just want to let you know, um, I know in the meeting packet, we did get a letter, uh, from, uh, Mr. Schober. And we do actually have, um, a quick little memo from, uh, from Delia that lists what the bond amounts are basically that the town has. And if we wanted to approve this request, the wording we would need, and I have this, uh, basically off of the letter that's been vetted through by, uh, the town attorney, is that we would, um, approve the release of the two bonds for this subdivision. Once a mylar showing the property combined back into one parcel with a notation that the purpose of the map is to rescind the subdivision shown on map number 2151, and that a deed conveying the property, um, to GCS Land Development Corporation, which deed contains a statement that the purpose of the deed is to rescind the subdivision and relinquish any rights granted pursuant to such subdivision, um, approval. That is, that would be the approved wording, uh, to use, uh, as far as what we've been advised from a legal, uh, point of view. Um, I don't know if there's anything really from your point of view, Delia, that you need to add, uh, for this?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And is there anything, Mr. Schober, that you wish to say or you don't really have to? But if there is something, we're, we're happy to hear from you. Otherwise, we do have your letter, which is very straightforward.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yep, go ahead.
Wonderful. No, I don't think there's anything that I, I wanted.
If you don't mind, Mr. Schober, just please state your first and last name for the record.
Sure. George Schober, uh, Summers, Connecticut. And I don't think that I have anything to add. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'm happy to try to answer any questions, but, uh, I would ask that the, uh, the bonds be released contingent upon meeting the two requirements. There is a draft, uh, map that my surveyor has prepared. And once that's reviewed, I know that Attorney Roberts had requested that, uh, the chairman, Mr. Gordon or Dr. Gordon, that you sign that, uh, it, once it's acceptable. And, uh, the other thing would be the deed and I would submit that to, uh, Delia and to Tina. And then they could submit to, uh, Attorney Roberts for review prior to my filing the deed. But I would ask that tonight, that the bonds, uh, be released contingent upon the meeting of the two requirements.
Well, thank you. I'll open up to the commission. What is your pleasure? Then we're happy to have any discussion.
I'm, I'll move to accept the request as presented by Chairman Gordon with the conditions, uh, already stated.
I'll second.
And who seconded it?
Dave Morse.
So motion by Joseph Adelena, seconded by David Morse. Any discussion from the, uh, commission point of view?
Just had one question. There's no houses built in this, right?
That, that's correct.
Okay, that's, I didn't think so. I just wanted to double check.
Was this the one where the New Roxbury Land Trust had the open space?
This is George Schober. Yes, the, uh, about half of the land was given to the New Roxbury Land Trust. It was about, uh, and I'm using round numbers, approximately 70 acres. And approximately 35 acres was given to New Roxbury.
And will they retain ownership of that land?
Yes, that land has been deeded. Again, George Schober, uh, that land has been deeded to New Roxbury. And all that's left is a little over 30 acres. And that's, uh, all I'm doing are combining the 14 lots, uh, which comprise the 30, slightly more than 30 acres.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? So I'll go through a, um, a, a, a vote call. Joseph Adelena?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Rynowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young? Tim is having some type of problem trying to get connected to audio. He can, he says he can hear, but he can't actually get through voice. So he's trying to see about dialing in. So, um, we can't record a, a vote for him yet, uh, at that point. So that does pass and the, um, uh, town hall will take care of whatever needs to be done. So, thank you for attending, Mr. Schober.
Thank you very much. Bye now.
The next item is agenda item 7B. This is, uh, number SP 641-06-25599 Route 169. This is, uh, a special permit for mixed-use retail store and residential use. This was to schedule a public hearing, but I will, I will note why, um, we can't do that tonight. Um, but is there anybody that needs, before we get into anything further on this, is there anybody who needs to recuse themselves?
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. So we'll note that for the record, David, that David Morse has recused on this agenda item. We still maintain a quorum, so that's good. I had sent an email to the commission, uh, yesterday. It's come to attention that we, based upon legal advice, we cannot tonight schedule the opening of a public hearing. The reason is there is an item that's going to need us to look into what type of resolution we have to go with relative to, and I'm going to read what, um, Attorney Roberts had sent. He says that the commission, we're going to have to decide, not tonight, uh, but we're going to have to decide whether any of the existing provisions of the current non-conforming use and structure, do the regulations allow a new special permit, uh, used to go into a non-conforming structure that contained a different use? Because right now there's residential, this is being proposed for residential and, uh, retail. It is an item, uh, and there's going to be some paperwork, uh, relative to the regulations that we will send out because this, there was a flurry of activity yesterday in early evening in order to sort out how procedurally and legally to handle this item tonight. We were not able to get anything from documents onto the website in time to meet that 24-hour minimum posting. Uh, and so what the legal advice is, because we need as a commission to sort through before any type of public hearing is, um, opened or scheduled for that matter, how we interpret the regulations, what the regulations allow or don't allow relative to the current non-conforming use, compared to the proposed non-conforming uses. Our action tonight would be then to, uh, say that we're not going to be scheduling yet the public hearing. We actually do have our usual additional number of days beyond the days we've already, since this application was received before we schedule a public hearing. And we actually have additional days based upon the Governor's Executive Order. What we would do is look to schedule this at a upcoming meeting for purposes of discussion out, without a public hearing. We do have a scheduled meeting, uh, the meeting agenda yet to be determined for, uh, July 2nd. We do have that. And we can put this on the agenda, um, if we vote to do so tonight, which would be basically the wording would be to not yet schedule a public hearing, but schedule, uh, discussion of the particular non-conforming use zoning issue. If we wanted for the June 2nd meeting, uh, July 2nd. I don't know if, who may or may not be around. I know that heads before a holiday weekend. Uh, July 4th is a Saturday and I think the official holiday for businesses would be Friday, July 3rd. Our other option would be to do July 9th. We would not want to do this on July 16th because we're gonna, uh, we may well have a big public hearing for the gas station starting that night, um, which could take up a lot of time that evening. But we would need to make certain we are clear that we can't yet open, schedule a public hearing and that we're going to identify, um, a meeting to take up this particular zoning matter. It's advised that we don't get into any further discussion on this matter now because we are going to need to deal with that at the meeting. And there's some documents that are going to have to be sent out, which I'll coordinate with Delia on. So that way it becomes clearer as far as what is the particular matter? And then what Attorney Roberts is raising as a concern, uh, relative to the regulations. So it will become clearer when we, when we get some of the documents out. It's not a lot of documents, uh, but unfortunately due to procedural item, uh, that's what's causing us. There's nothing else that's causing us to take this action. It's, it's purely a procedural matter as far as how to legally proceed. And that we're going to have to resolve. So I don't know who, if people, if commissioners, will you be available if we stick to the July 2nd meeting that's already on the books? Or will people be away because of the upcoming holiday and look at July 9th? Delia, I think you're away July 2nd.
Yes.
You want to go through a roll, Jeff? I can make it.
Yeah, sure. Why don't we do that and we can see who might be able to do? Our choices are July 2nd or July 9th?
I can do either.
What?
I can, I'm sorry. I can do either.
Okay. Um, Sid? What is your?
I can do either also.
Gail?
You're on mute, Gail.
Can't hear you.
I'm pretty sure I can do July 2nd because I already asked for that off. I don't have the July schedule yet, so I don't know about July 9th.
Okay. I'm available either night. Jeff Marcott, what's your availability?
I'm available either night as well.
David, what's, what would be your availability? Oh, actually you're recused, so we can't. So you'll, you're, it's moot. Fred, what, what would be your availability?
Whatever, it's fine with me.
Okay. Dwight, what would be your availability?
I believe I'm available, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And Tim, are you able to? I know you can hear us. Are you able to actually get the connection to speak? Does not look like he's been able to yet. Okay. Um, I guess that issue would be, uh, Delia, would you need to be present for our discussion?
I guess that's up to you. You and I can speak in advance and I can speak with Attorney Roberts and I could prepare written information if you need.
All right.
I'll be available on the second, but, um.
If we were to do the 9th, Delia would be available. Would that be preferable to have her available from a staff point of view? Since, Delia, you've, you've looked through and have dealt with this special permit application.
Yeah. I mean, I actually, I could call in. I just won't have access to the internet.
Okay. So we could do July, we could do our July 2nd meeting already scheduled. Okay. It sounds like we would, we would have a quorum and enough people to be able to do that. So what we would need then would be, in order to make this effective, would be a motion that would basically be along the lines that, um, we are extending the time to schedule the public hearing. We can't yet say when we're going to open it, but we're, we're right now extending the time before we schedule it, uh, and that we will take up this, um, zoning matter, um, at the July 2nd meeting.
I, I would move, uh, Mr. Chairman, to make that the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Gail?
That was me.
So motion by Joseph Adelena, seconded by Gail Dickinson. Do we have any discussion on that matter? I'll go through the roll. Joe Adelena?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
And Dwight Rynowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young? Tim, are you able to have connection? No, he still isn't able to seemingly be able to connect to talk. All right, so I can't record a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Tim Young text you his votes and stuff?
Uh, he is, but I can't, yes, I, I don't think I have any ability to take a proxy vote. Uh, but I can, I, he has actually texted me. He seems to have an issue trying to connect in to be able to speak. I've given him the phone numbers. Uh, but for some reason, it, it, there's, there's an issue with his, um, um, connection. Yep, Delia?
Um, the applicant wants to know if they can speak?
What is the purpose of speaking?
I don't know. Maybe they're not available that night. I don't know.
Well, if the applicant is present, what, if you can let me know what's your purpose of speaking?
Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is John Guskowski. I'm a planner, uh, with CME and CHA companies on behalf of the applicant, uh, who is also here this evening. Actually, I don't know if he still is. Oh, there he is. Yeah, Jason Bosa-Lay from Rusty Relic.
What is the purpose of speaking?
Uh, the purpose of speaking is to appeal to the commission to, uh, resolve this issue this evening as well as to, uh, request a reduction in the fee.
Um, we have been advised not to do, resolve this issue tonight. We do need to schedule a meeting because there are documents that need to go out.
Okay. I, I spoke with the town attorney this evening and he, he indicated that the commission, if they agreed, could, uh, move on with this issue. But obviously you've spoken with him also.
Yes, I have. And the advice at this point is not to resolve this matter tonight, but to take it up at a, um, upcoming meeting, which would be our July 2nd meeting. There are additional documents on this matter that commissioners do need to get to better understand what the issues are. So, uh, and I had relayed that to the town attorney that my recommendation as chair is, it wouldn't be fair to the commissioners to try to take this matter up without having seen those documents ahead of time and be able to look specifically where we are with the regs and what specific are the issues? And also, Delia, to, uh, prepare a, a memo that, that really bullets what the issues are that we really need to look at and zero in on. So it had been worked out yesterday that we would, the advice is not to resolve this tonight. The commission has no authority to, um, refund any part of or the entirety of a, um, application fee. The commission does have authority to extend scheduling of a public hearing, including based upon the, uh, the Governor's Executive Order, uh, gives us additional time to, uh, do that as well. But if we, uh, don't resolve this matter and try to, uh, rush it tonight and don't fully take care of it, one does run the risk that if it isn't fully resolved, it could potentially lead to a denial of an application on a procedural matter. So it is in everyone's interest to let us, um, follow what's been advised as far as to take this up, which would be July 2nd meeting. We'll get everything out in time to commissioners, certainly, um, Mr. Guskowski and the applicants, uh, as well, would, would, would have access to those documents. And then we would actually be able to, uh, proceed, uh, and go accordingly. That's, that's the recommendations and what's been advised.
So to, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to the question of the fee, you said the commission doesn't have authority to refund. Um, it, it is our, uh, belief, and we express this to the zoning officer, that the incorrect fee was applied, uh, to this application at time of receipt.
You would need to take that up at town hall. The commission doesn't have authority to, uh, refund any part of a, um, of the fees that actually, if there was an error in the fee, that flows through the treasurer's office would correct that. Or if it requires, uh, the Board of Selectmen to, to take that up. We ourselves can't take a vote on the matter because we don't have authority per the town ordinance. At least as of yet, that actually has been a proposal. But right now we don't have authority. But if it was an overcharge, that gets handled with, with Tina through her office and the treasurer. They take care of that.
So all I need to do is get the treasurer to agree with me?
If it was an overcharge.
It was.
They take care of that. You would need to talk with Tina and she would talk with the treasurer.
Yep. Very, very well.
Yep, that's the process that we, we always follow for that. So, um, okay. So we'll note that for the, um, our July 2nd meeting and we'll work on trying to get, uh, the documents, there's not many of them, out as soon as we can to, so everybody gets enough heads up to read through them and go accordingly. And Attorney Roberts would be able, um, to, I believe, join us for that meeting and can answer questions as well. Okay. Uh, the next agenda item is, let me just see where I am on the numbering. 8, AA. This is Chamberlain Mill, 286 Old Turnpike Road, a proposed deck and shed roof structure on same, uh, footprint. I believe we were able to get all the documents out, even though some of them came in after the deadline, but I gave the okay to nevertheless, uh, proceed, um, so we could then, uh, take up this matter, um, tonight. But we do have, um, we did receive, um, uh, do have the, uh, application. I've been told that the application is a, a complete application, uh, in the fees, um, pay. Tina did review, um, through this. I know, Delia, did you review this at all? I believe, uh, Tina did.
I reviewed a little bit, but I didn't make any final conclusions.
Tina had told me this was a complete application, that you did not have any concerns or problems from a ZEO point of view relative to the application. Tina had told me this was a complete application, that you did not have any concerns or problems from a ZEO point of view relative to the application. I know the applicant is here, so Jean, if you wish to say anything on the application, just state your first and last name and we're happy to hear from you if you wish.
Thank you, Jeff. Jean McClellan, I'm president of Chamberlain Mill Incorporated, a nonprofit educational organization that is revitalizing an old sawmill on Old Turnpike Road. I think you've seen documents. I hope you saw an email that I sent to Tina LaJoy and part of the pack also. What we intend to do is to build a structure that will serve both as an access deck for handicapped access to the main level of the mill and also to create the footprint of an old lean-to shed. And I think you received photograph of what that lean shed looked like. It was erected in the late 1930s. And that shed is very important to the mill. It housed the Studebaker engine that was pulled into service when water power was done in by the great flood of 1936. And as we have been restoring the mill, we are trying to restore it to its late period of use. The site, the mill site since the 1700s, the building itself dates to 1900, originally water-powered. I won't go into details there, but our hope is that this platform, which you've seen in the drawings, will make a smooth transition for people in wheelchairs from the parking area to the main level of the mill. Additionally, beyond the platform that integrates the recreated shed, we will be putting in steps at the north end of the building, the right side of it, as you look at the front of the building, which will be used by people who are going back and forth from the saw, you know, loading logs, that kind of thing. It will not be a public access. And I was also, it was also suggested to me by Tina LaJoy that maybe we just, we do not have final plans for signage, but it makes everybody's life simpler. To get that done now, we can certainly stay within the town size guidelines. No sign will be illuminated. It will be at the southern end of the parking lot, which is the rear end. And it will be an informational sign, the kind you see in parks and historic sites and that sort of thing. But we don't have detailed description of it yet. But the main event is this platform and recreated shed, which is on the footprint. We've been very careful to reproduce it as faithfully as we could on the footprint of the original.
Thank you. I'll open up to what the commission wishes to do and then we can certainly ask any questions or comments if commissioners have any.
I'd like to speak on it, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is a great project. And I think that restoring the old sawmill and making it available to public is a great idea. It's great to see this piece of history being restored and being refreshed and renewed. I think it's, you know, I've looked at this several years ago when I worked for the town and I found it fascinating, the technology and how these people worked and the efforts that they made to keep the sawmill running. So I'd be in favor of this project.
Is that a motion to approve the application as presented? Dwight?
I would like to make that motion, yes. I'd like to make the motion that this project move forward as proposed by the people here, Jean McClellan.
And is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Is that you, Joe?
Yes, but I think everybody's trying to second it. I'd like to follow up on Dwight's comments and really compliment Jean and all the people who've been working so hard on getting this mill back into running shape. It's been a tremendous effort and I'm sure it'll pay off in the future.
And I just.
Support it as well.
Point out Lynn Smith.
Just stage your name again, Jean, for the records, because we just need to make certain we have it on audio.
And I just want to acknowledge Lynn Smith, who is the architect, is also in Zoom meeting. Another board member wasn't able to get in through Zoom.
Well, thank you. And I know the commission has been supportive over the years of this. We've taken some votes to support things in the past for the mill. I know I personally did support it separately of it, so it is a wonderful project, so it's great to see it continuing to move forward, which is good. Is there anything further from, on discussion from commissioners on this item? If not, I'll go through the roll. Joseph Adelata?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett? Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, aye. Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young, are you able to?
Aye.
Oh, okay.
Look at that.
We can hear you. Good, thank you. We couldn't hear you before, but we can hear you now.
I've been reading your lips and I'm starting to figure out how to talk now.
Okay. Well, that so passes and Town Hall will take care of whatever needs to be done for post-approval paperwork stuff. So thank you. Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Thank you to the commission very much.
The next agenda item is Agenda Item 9. This is number SP 640-04-24, ND Swadia LLC, doing business as Woodstock Country Store. This is a special permit modification to number SP 3969802 at 1484 Route 171. We had scheduled, this is an item that we need to reschedule. I believe I did send an email out to the commission explaining why. They were unable to open the public hearing tonight and the reason is that it came to attention that the posting of the public hearing signs, two of them actually have to be posted on each lot, each road frontage. We're not done, first of all, two weren't posted and the one that was, was not posted by the time required by statute. And the second was that the applicant had not sent out the public hearing notices to owners of property within 500-foot radius of the parcel's boundary at least 10 days prior to the public hearing. I believe some of them went out later, but they did not go out per statute. And for those two reasons, and I did conference with Tina and Delia and Attorney Roberts to verify, we cannot open the public hearing because there, those provisions have not been met. The applicant and the applicant's representative, the engineering firm from Massachusetts have been notified, so they are aware. This, there, in addition, we've been receiving a lot of revised documents and very last-minute documents. And there's actually some even more that have come to us, which we're not even being able to be posted for tonight's meeting anyway. So we did remind the applicant that documents that are coming to us, we really need to get them within a certain time period, ideally to get them all out to you, there's a lot of them, and get them all posted. Some of these documents are big. I think one document's 80 pages. So we're working on that to try to make certain that we're keeping track of which documents are which and get them out to you. But because those items were not met for public noticing and property owner noticing, legally, we can't open tonight. What we would do is reschedule it. This is a big public hearing. As you probably know, there's a lot of public interest on this. And we do have a regular monthly business meeting for July 16. That would give us enough time to make certain we're getting additional documents in that we're waiting to get, but also to make certain to give enough time for staff and engineering to review through them all and provide us their additional reports. And it's also going to give staff at Town Hall the logistical capability with more time to get everything sorted through, scanned, posted, which has been taking a lot of time to do, just given the volume of documents. So the advice is to, for us to vote, to have a motion to reschedule the opening of the public hearing for July 16. I believe we had listed this public hearing for, I thought it was 7:45 or maybe 7:30, whatever is our usual time, but I think we've been listing them as 7:45 for the public hearings to start. But that's where we stand procedurally on this, what we have to do tonight. So we're not able to open the public hearing tonight. I don't know.
I move that we move the public hearing to the July 16 meeting.
And the 7:45 time is okay?
7:45 time is fine. That works for everybody else.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So motion by David Morse, seconded by Dwight Reinow. Does anyone have any discussion? I'm assuming that made sense why we, unfortunately, at the last minute, had to say we can't open. Okay, I'll go through the roll. Joseph Adelata?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett? Gail Dickinson?
You're on mute, Gail.
Gail?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, aye. Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
That so passes and we will inform the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just ask Delia a question relative to sequence of applications referring to what P&amp;Z has to do versus what Inland Wetlands has to do versus what DEEP has to do in terms of who comes first?
Sure. David, did you want to answer that?
Sure. The Planning and Zoning Commission has to wait for a report from the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. It doesn't mean that you need to wait for them to approve it. You need a report from them. So once they make a decision, they can give a report. Sometimes it's just the minutes to the commission about what their decision was and then planning and zoning can move ahead. You don't have to wait for approval from DEEP.
Do we know if the project is contingent on approval from DEEP or at least the gas?
No, I don't believe so.
You don't believe so? Okay.
I mean, you need to make sure, like, DOT's approved it and whoever's in charge of gas stations, you probably want to make sure they're in charge of it, but.
That's DEEP in charge of gas stations, I believe.
That's correct.
But I haven't reviewed gas stations before, so I'm not sure if we needed an approval from them.
What we'll do, Joe, is we'll ask Rich Roberts. He'll tell us exactly, do we need DEEP? But DEEP is going to have to weigh in anyway as far as the whole proposal. I believe this did go to DEEP.
Gas stations have to be approved or at least reviewed and approved by DEEP. And it looks like Dwight's shaking his, nodding his head yes, so, okay.
Yes, there's an underground storage tank unit at the DEEP that has to approve all the containment and all the lines, everything that's underground. So, yeah, they got to sign off on the whole package before, you know, it can move forward.
Thank you.
And we'll ask Rich Roberts if we need a report from DEEP for us to be making a decision. And we'll ask him about that. One thing to keep in mind is, is that we do have a provision in state statute that says that we do get extra time to continue a public hearing while we're waiting for inland wetlands. Now, with that said, we do, extending the time to open the public hearing actually will fall under the additional time that the governor's executive order gives us. So we reserve the time normally given to us by state statute. And we do have additional time to extend public hearings and during a public hearing, continue a public hearing, and also some of our post-public hearing deliberation. As long as we're within, before the beginning of September, before the governor's executive orders expire, we do have additional time to us if we felt we needed to be waiting for additional reports, such as if we have to get DEEP. But we are aware from inland wetlands, we will have extra time, depending on how much time inland wetlands has for that. And we did look at the timetable for that. But I'll send the query off to Rich Roberts tonight and he'll tell us exactly
Thank you.
the role that DEEP has. And we'll let everybody know. Was there any other question about the procedure? Did that answer your questions, Joe?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
The next, we have our ZEO reports. Tina is not able to be at the meeting. We have her reports that she put into the packet as far as May and June. Looks like permits that have been issued. I know she's been kept busy with various different types of permit requests. So we do, and if anyone has any questions about it, because she's not able to be here tonight, you can certainly separately reach out to her and she'll be happy to answer questions relative to her report on that. As far as the office of DED is concerned, we do keep track of the hours she's spending, not because we're questioning she's not doing the work, just because we're keeping track of what the commission is being listed as paying for its budget versus inland wetlands and ZPA. But again, come July 1st with the new fiscal year, she does get three additional hours. That's going to be 18 hours a week for planning and zoning matters. So, but she has been kept very busy and quite frankly, looking at the listing that I've been getting from the treasurer's office every month, that going up to 18 hours is definitely going to be used for planning and zoning type matters and in general zoning matters. So I'm glad that we were able to get that into the budget to become active, actually, in the very near future. There any citizens' comments? Not on anything that's on the agenda? Okay, we do have, there's actually no bills to pay for us to vote. There will be some, someone's coming up that will have to vote as we get more into getting bills on the gas station special permit, because there's going to be a lot of engineering review. But right now, there are no bills that have needed to be paid. I believe the treasurers, that the report from the treasurer's office made the meeting packet. Just showing where we stand with regards to our budget as through June 10. And also, you know, where we are standing relative to what our budgeted amount is. And then you'll note that for next month, what'll end up happening is as of July 1st, the new budget numbers will kick in. And we'll continue to see those numbers on a monthly basis. Does anyone have any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, we have no correspondence to the commission outside of the upcoming public hearing on the gas station. Those did not make the meeting packet because we didn't get them in time to send out. They will come to you in the upcoming meeting packet, some of that correspondence. We have no other correspondence at this time. That takes us then to Agenda Item 14, which I know is Commissioner Rich's item where he likes to make a motion to adjourn. I don't know if he wishes to do it.
I'll let somebody else do it.
Okay, this is a privilege that Rich is gonna, Fred is gonna, Fred Rich is.
I move for adjourn.
Was that you, David?
Yes.
Did someone wish to?
I don't know, David, you may be, you may be too young to make that motion.
Watch it, Gail.
I'll second it.
Do you want that comment in the minutes?
No, but it'll be on the tape.
Were you seconding the motion to adjourn now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, motion by David Morse, seconded by Gail Dickinson to adjourn. I'll go through the roll call. I'm sure nobody would dare vote against those two made in second in the motion. Joe Adelata?
Aye. No, I mean, I. No, I mean, I.
I was getting a little nervous here, you were. Sid Blodgett? Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, aye. Jeff Markcott?
You're muted, Jeff.
Unless you're really giving this thought about how to vote. How do you vote to-
I was muted, I'm sorry. I-
Okay. David Morse?
I apologize. I'm over here in the far reaches of town.
Maybe you should get some other dial-up.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
If you're only that easy.
Dwight Reinowitz? Kenny, are you muted?
I can hear you.
Yes, I, okay. And Tim Young?
Aye.
I take that as that it passes. I'll note that the meeting is adjourned at 8:25 PM. I want to thank all of you for continuing to put up with our Zoom meetings. Just so you know, I did query today about Town Hall, about our upcoming July public hearing, because it is going to be a big public hearing as far as lots of documents to see, to try to show on the screens. And we are expecting potentially a number of people who might want to connect in. So it sounds like they're still not wanting to have us meet at Town Hall, although the governor's, governor's provisions do allow meetings up to 25 people, as long as you're spaced. So I am going to follow up with them because even at a minimum, if us as commissioners with the staff and with the applicant, the applicant's representative, if we were able to meet in the big room, it can be set up for us to meet and the public connect in by Zoom, since we're not going to be able to fill the entire room with, with social distancing, to see if we might be able to make it easier for all of us to all these documents up on the screen live, as opposed to trying to see what we can do on the computer. But I'm going to follow up on that. But if any of you do feel that you would like to see if we might be able to make that work, I would ask you to let the first selection know, because that's who makes the decision if we can actually need a Town Hall. But I did raise that just because of our ability to be able to do at least some of our work. If we have to meet by Zoom, we certainly will. And we'll be showing lots of documents up on the screen and we'll sort that through, how we'll handle it. But I did want to let you know, I have raised that as far as logistically what might work for the commission for that July 16th meeting. Otherwise, we'll go accordingly. Thank you, everybody, and enjoy the rest of your week and continue to stay, stay healthy and stay safe.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
The meeting?
What?
Aye.
Are you adjourning the meeting?
I listed it as 8:25 PM.